All right, I'm gonna call the Springfield City Council work session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Counselor Pitts. Counselor Mo.
Here.
Counselor Rodley.
Here.
Counselor Stare.
Here.
Counselor Woodrow. And Counselor Pictionary.
Here, thank you.
Counselor Woodrow is excused and Damian just hopped on, can you hear us?
Hi, we're here.
And Counselor Pitts is here. We have one item for the work session this evening. It is a Springfield Municipal Court Treatment Initiative with Judge Tierney. And then we're gonna have the judge come up and take us away.
I'm here today to discuss the Treatment Court Initiative and to request guidance as to whether or not this would be an endeavor that is worth pursuit in the city of Springfield. I have corresponded with Ms. Knights and we have a PowerPoint to briefly address our roadmap for tonight and what I would like to request guidance upon. Briefly, to ensure that all parties are aware of what Treatment Court is and the background, we will discuss where it originated. The most the most common crimes in the city of Springfield and how this court believes that a Treatment Court would help Springfield. The primary hurdle, of course, would be funding. We'll have a brief discussion about that, how operations would work and the guidance that I'm requesting from you. In reviewing, the quickest way to really break down what a Treatment Court is, I found two very quick videos from the National Drug Court Resource Center that will take three to four minutes of your time and should briefly lay out what a Treatment Court is.
As we bring multimedia into our presentations. Hey Leonard, can you, can you hear it at all? Okay.
That's really small.
So we're gonna bring the judge back up and have him give us the, give us the Cliff Notes of the Cliff Notes here and we'll continue to work through our, our, our technology challenges.
Thank you. These two videos, they briefly break down what Treatment Courts are. Treatment Courts are an alternative avenue versus the traditional criminal justice system. Versus placing and incarcerating an individual, this places a person on probation with a Treatment Court team that would include a supervised, that would include a probation officer, court supervisors, dedicated treatment staff such as a certified alcohol and drug counselor, as well as a case manager, and other ancillary individuals who would encourage an individual's sobriety and treatment. When an individual enters into Treatment Court, they engage in a contract with the court that they are going to do Treatment Court as part of their probation instead of, for example, spending ninety days in custody. The, this type of treatment has been established through, first, the first Treatment Court occurred in about nineteen eighty-nine in Miami, Florida. There's a number of Treatment Courts throughout the country. And essentially, this method of encouragement has been shown to reduce recidivism and to demonstrate a stronger community force versus the traditional modes of incarceration. I believe that the second video would discuss how drug courts work and essentially the criminal or the city prosecutor would find a particular charge that would apply to an individual. Now, we all know that Measure One Ten decriminalized most drug possessions, so this would would apply to property crimes and other crimes that have an ancillary basis in drug-controlled substance abuse and/or other drug issues. Once the city prosecutor identifies those particular cases, they're referred and discussed with the defense attorney. And then a Treatment Court can be an option. This does not work for every individual, but it will work for some and it will provide them with a treatment opportunity for the individuals who need said treatment. Moving on to background here, Treatment Courts have been established nineteen eighty-nine, as stated earlier. There are twenty-six in Oregon. There are three in Lane County. A Veterans Court, a Mental Health Court, and a Drug Court. Those target primarily downward departure cases and major felony property cases that come out of Lane County. A number of counties in the state of Oregon have two or more Treatment Courts and they've been established throughout the nation. An example court for the city of Springfield would include veterans and would really focus on mental health as well as a substance abuse prong. Ms. Knight. We have some brief notes on effectiveness as when I was researching this matter, the Lynn County Oregon Judicial Department was able to provide statistics that the number, the costs using a Treatment Court reduced the amount of money spent by a community from ninety-six dollars a day to nine dollars a day when targeting the correct individuals. I'll talk about high-risk, high-needs matrix as well as how this program versus the traditional criminal justice model of incarceration without services reduces recidivism and equates to a different scenario where we have individuals that are effectively monitored by probation officers. That'll be one of the keys that I talk about shortly, and that would be a new prong. We'd have a supervised, a probation officer who supervises directly these high-risk, high-needs individuals. And we address the highest category of offenders and I will discuss that as well. Numerous articles statistically showing that these type of program, programs do work. We'll, we'll talk about now the, the level of crimes here in the city of Springfield. What might be interesting to the city council is the number of arrests that we have. Twenty-twenty-one, two-hundred-and-forty-one DUI arrests, twenty-twenty-two-seventy-seven, and before COVID, three-hundred-and-thirty-six DUI arrests. Approximately a day, I can attest that during this week, I've received a call every night for warrants regarding particular regarding particular DUI calls and is certainly active and part of the Springfield Municipal Court's arraignment docket are daily DUI calls. The second, the most primary charge is criminal trespass, criminal trespass one and criminal trespass two DUI is the second most commonly charged crime followed by disorderly conduct with, in the most recent data I have is twenty-nineteen, with three-hundred-and-twenty arrests and theft in the third degree and theft in the second degree with five-hundred-and-eleven combined arrests in twenty-nineteen. As I prepared for this matter and I spoke to the Lane County District Attorney's Office, delivery possession and manufacturing cases that came out of the city of Springfield, seven-hundred-and-fifty-one over the course of twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty-one, demonstrating that there is certainly a large drug population and need here in our community. We're also looking at the DUI matters that were charged within the city. Two-hundred-and-seventeen in twenty-twenty-one DUI cases, two-hundred-and-sixty-two in twenty-twenty, and three-hundred-and-thirty-eight in twenty-nineteen. Ms. Knight, now the problem here with these number of cases is that when an individual is placed within the city of Springfield's the court's jurisdiction, the court is the primary probation officer. I'm the individual that is responsible for making sure that they are paying their fees and/or complying with any court-ordered treatment. However, the problem here is that the court has very minimal treatment opportunities. Unless there's a DUI which is required treatment under a thirteen-point-zero-two-zero, there is no mandated substance abuse treatment. The court's primary issue here is that we see these individuals who have this substance abuse problem cycle through our system. And that is one of the primary reasons I'm requesting guidance because I do not have a, a method or at least any opportunities to work on addressing this with our, our community. No engagement, no direct engagement with individuals to encourage their, their community engagement, their community involvement such as job services, housing, or education. And statistics have shown that persistent incarceration does not necessarily interrupt the criminal cycle. I can attest that I do see the same individuals very frequently. Ms. Knight. Now, focusing on why I'm requesting guidance, the court believes that a Treatment Court could benefit Springfield for a number of reasons. And I would like to focus primarily on this risk need matrix that we will also address. But to briefly touch on, a, a court of this nature would focus on a number of individuals that are the highest risk, highest need. Risk meaning they're most likely to continue their criminal activity, need meaning they need services. That person would come into the court either through a deal with the city prosecutor or because of the court's own probation determination and be placed on supervised probation. The key here is that we'd have an officer that's dedicated to ensuring this individual's working on their sobriety, working towards getting a job in housing and not associating with other drug offenders and/or criminals. And that they have to come back to court every week or every other week as the treatment needs dictate. We believe that this model, as it follows the drug court model, would have provided direct accountability to the court. We would be able to tackle this highest risk, highest need of our population to make sure that these DUI offenses come down and we're targeting that, or at least we're addressing the individuals who have that highest need. As stated, mandated treatment, alcohol, drug, and mental health treatment, emergence, we'll talk about as well. As indicated that they're happy to play a major role in this program to discuss whether, if there's guidance to discuss how they, to discuss the treatment, drug, and mental health otherwise.
Judge, do you want to, do you want us to hold our questions or?
I'm happy to have a, a back and forth.
Leonard.
Okay, thanks. I'm, I'm, I'm very much interested in this presentation. I, I wanted to find out, this mandated treatment that we're talking about, is it going to be funded at all by the city or will the person in the drug court, the person that's being treated, will they have to pay for it themselves?
Counselor, in one of my later slides, we speak about funding and we talk about how that would work. Certainly, the goal is to have the individual maintain a job and become a dedicated taxpaying member of our community. Each individual will be different and I can certainly attest that restitution would always be required and whether or not court fees are required would be relate to each particular individual and their circumstances. I can tell, and I can tell you, Mr. Stare, that in my previous history, that individuals usually had to pay some portion to show that they are demonstrating and maintaining a tax-responsible association with our community.
It would, so it would be sort of a sliding scale based on ability to pay, to pay.
Hey Leonard. I, he's got about two.
He's got more, more slides. Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
And that mandated treatment that was stated, emergence would dictate the, using their CADC as well as their mental health and drug counselors' treatment to make sure that these individuals are progressing, we're ensuring clean time and we are making sure that they are becoming productive members of society. The key here with the probation officer and with the court is that we're holding individuals accountable. Someone who is not appearing to the court will receive a warrant and we will make sure that we address that matter in the court. Now, the key to this matter is the risk and need matrix. So I know that this, this is a new term, most likely, and that is the risk and need ma- matrix is a is a screening system that is used throughout the country to identify the correct individuals. As some counselors know, there used to be a drug treatment court of some kind in the city of Springfield. This was a diversionary court that targeted the lowest risk and the lowest need. That is the opposite of what we are looking for. We want to target the individuals that are most likely to commit egregious criminal actions in our city. So we would use this management inventory to review and make sure we are targeting the correct offenders. Emergent.
Counselor Rodley.
Just a quick clarification because I don't see it in here. Would these folks be folks whose primary residence is in Springfield? Or would it be people who have, are, just happen to get arrested in Springfield?
That question has not been asked. Counselor, I believe that the crime that occurs in Springfield is what we need to address. Whether or not they live in Eugene would depend on their circumstances. I do not believe we'd want to limit, limit it geographically. So my answer would be, it could be individuals outside of Springfield as long as they can come to court to make sure that they can address their matters.
And my follow-up question around that would be then, how, or, and maybe we haven't gotten that far yet to think about if someone is, you know, highest need, highest risk, there would be a good chance that perhaps they've also been arrested in another municipality or by someone else. So how would we make sure that these were folks who were not getting these services and who were not going through drug court in, say, Eugene or somewhere else? How would we, we, are we, or are we going to do that?
So I have access to all those systems and what the first step in any type of these programs would be the assessment where the probation officer, the court would screen to make sure that we're not duplicating any services. We do work actively with Lane County Mental Health Court, Lane County Drug Court, Lane County Veterans Court now to make sure that if an individual is in services, we're letting them know that we have them in custody and we are attempting to work with them. We want to make sure that we know that Lane County has more resources that they can utilize there. This would primarily be for individuals who have Springfield offenses. We don't want to duplicate efforts.
Thank you.
Regarding that risk and need matrix, the risk is their like to, likelihood to reoffend and the re, re, excuse me, their recidivism likelihood and their need is the number of services in order to become productive members of society. There was some concern regarding our panel whether or not we had that population that had a high risk, high need. Emergence partnered with the court to screen individuals that were currently in the jail. Of those twenty people that were screened, all twenty had a substance abuse disorder. One was moderate, six high, thirteen were very high. That is not in the slides because that information came after I had already submitted. Regarding the needs, fifteen had moderate or severe needs while four denied any needs altogether. So that is my, my belief that the individuals we are currently having custody are that right matrix and the right individuals we want to address within our community. While the court was addressing whether or not this would be appropriate, the court contacted the agencies that are on the screen to ascertain whether or not they would support said Treatment Court. All of the agencies responded affirmatively that they would like to play a major part in this Treatment Court. Well, Lament Family Treatment is the inpatient and outpatient provider. Emergence also provides and would be our primary contact, LCPH. Particularly for this court, Veterans Legacy and Captain Buckwald indicated that we could use that program for veterans that are interested and would be engaged, potentially almost a work program type of probationary process. Now, Counselor Stare, getting to funding. Funding comes every April through the Bureau of Justice Administration. Last April, the funding opened in early March and closed early April. The amount of funding that was provided was seven-hundred-thousand dollars over a four-year term, one-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars per year. The city is, would be required or any municipality would be required to have a twenty-five percent in-kind match and the Treatment Court be required to follow best practices. Some example awards twenty-twenty-one, five-hundred-and-fifty and five-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand from comparable municipalities throughout the country. I was unable to find twenty-twenty-two awards. They have not awarded those yet from the last April grant cycle. This four-year funding opportunity does terminate, but I can tell the city council that Lane County received one-point-nine million last year in funding. You can continually reapply and that would be my intention to continue to grow the court and continue to apply for funding. Ms. Knight, in preparing for this, we looked at some numbers and with the finance director went over some potential hypotheticals. We've locked down the city prosecutor and defense attorney as matching thirty-five to forty thousand per year in this hypothetical. Court costs and time are still a little undetermined because we would need some new court staff. QRA, which would be our case manager, thirty-seven thousand, and the biggest question would be the probation officer who we would have to work with the Springfield Police Department to ascertain how that would play a large role. Emergence stated that they would not intend to provide any costs in the initial stages of, of this court, if there was to be a court, and would continue to grow and to apply for funding with us. So I am before the city council today to request guidance as to whether or not a Springfield Treatment Court would be helpful and whether or not a court can continue to look down these avenues. I request guidance regarding, and I'm happy to, guidance regarding this issue and happy to answer any additional questions as to how I envision this court and how it would work with the city of Springfield.
Leonard.
Thanks for this presentation, Judge. The only other question that I've got now is, will emergence provide mental health and drug treatment services?
Absolutely, yes. One of the keys of this program is that it would be a dual diagnosis program, meaning that we are focusing on individuals with a substance abuse disorder as well as a validated mental health disorder, anything that's in the DSM. Emergence has contracted with the Lane County Mental Health Program for a number of years and are able to address the ancillary mental health needs. The, throughout my studies, I can report that most individuals that do have a substance abuse program, problem have mental health problems that correspond with their substance abuse problem.
Thank you. Well, with that being the case and with the idea that nobody is not going to be eligible for this program based on an inability to pay, I'm a hundred percent in favor of this and I, I would favor giving this program all the money that's being requested. Thanks.
Well, hang on, Leonard. Yeah, we're, 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 we're not to that, we're, we're, we're not to that point. I see all the city staff going, wait a minute. But Cory.
I don't know if I was, my hand was up for Sir Damian's, but um, first, I just appreciate the detail that's in here and I appreciate all the sort of prep work and legwork and already sort of talking to partners to see how we would fit in the ecosystem. And this may be like, nobody knows the answer to this, but is there potentially, you know, part of Measure One Ten was that there was supposed to be funding that came, that was going to be for treatment. Is this the sort of thing that maybe could be also funded or would we just fully fund this with the, 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 the federal funding and the local match?
I'm not an expert on this, Counselor. My understanding of Measure One Ten solely relates to the decriminalization and the citations that are supposed to arise from the decriminalization. Per statute, those have to go to Lane County Circuit Court, cannot come to Springfield.
Okay, that's helpful.
Damian.
Good, good presentation. I definitely wish, could have saw the video. I know Counselor Pictionary prefers pictures over words any day, so there's that. Hey, Pish. But, but no, and now seriously, I guess, so some of the things that I wonder is how will bias be reduced in this program? You know, I see whether it's racial minorities or even, you know, people of low socioeconomic class potentially not having access to this. And, and I just wonder, you know, what, what will be done to eliminate, you know, bias as far as, you know, selecting who does this? That's one question. Two, what type of benchmarks or, or whatever are in place that are going to do an assessment to see if this program is working? It's gonna be after six months, a year, all that stuff. And three, I mean, one thing that, you know, I'm all about partnership and, and I see that people who are in this position not only might be experienced, you know, houselessness, but also might be experienced joblessness with, which actually might lead them to reverting back to some of their old ways. And so I'm curious, what are some of the partnerships that might happen, whether it be some type of, you know, skill building or career coaching or even, you know, housing? I, I know that, that's a grand, you know, wish, but you know, just thinking about how do we allow people to be self-sustaining as well as healing at the same time?
Counselor, regarding your first question, bias and diversity, Dr. Gervin from the University of Oregon has previously provided diversity discussions about this particular issue and the NADCP, National Association of Drug Court Professionals, has thoroughly engaged us. The key to this is we make sure we have a blind resource where we're not looking at any socio, socioeconomic and gender or race determinations when providing offers. That is the key and that is one thing that NADCP requires programs do to ensure that there are not any racial or gender bias in our programs. Regarding benchmarks, per this, per the grant, if we were to be accepted into said grant, we're required to follow up, we're required to have data. We're required to have an analyst to make sure that we are following the correct procedures and this is part of the grant. The court previously discussed this with Lane Council of Governments and we certainly have, we have connections to a professor at the American University who would work with us as an analyst as well as the already well-known experts that are down at El, ElCog. As it relates to joblessness and housing, Counselor, this is actually my favorite part. Once you get to the third and fourth section of a Treatment Court, you start, you have clean time under your belt and this case manager who I've mentioned briefly as part of the team, their goal is to make sure that you're housed and make sure that you have a job. We work with Saint, we would work with Saint Vincent de Paul. We would work with sponsors. We would work with a number of organizations to provide people with the jobs and the resources though so that they could succeed. I, our, our model here would be using Lane County Treatment Court and their services to assist us so that we do not have to reinvent the wheel. But that would be one of the sources we use to provide for clients in Springfield.
Steve.
I've always had a question like this. You said we received a federal grant for X number of dollars. What was that?
The example amount for twenty-twenty-two was seven-hundred-thousand.
Seven-hundred-thousand for four years?
Over four years.
That's always tricked to me.
We did not receive that.
No.
No, we didn't. Yes, we didn't.
No, we did not.
Well, hypothetically.
Right, I want to be clear though.
Okay, we get, we get this grant for seven-hundred-thousand dollars for four years and so that's, you gotta divide that by four, right? Okay, so it is as much as you think or hope, but if we get that, can we apply the next year for another grant? Does, do we get that grant? Does it go on top of that? How would, how would that work?
So Counselor, if we could go back to the, I don't know sure if we can go back to the funding slide.
Oh, it's just, just a question.
So the example in twenty-twenty-two was the, for implementing a Treatment Court, the BJA, Bureau of Justice Administration would award a total of seven-hundred-thousand over four years
Okay.
to a municipality. That would be spread out as long as you met the benchmarks that were provided in the particular case. I do not know what twenty-twenty-three will bring about, how much money that will be. Over the course of the last twenty years, the implementation funding has decreased because there are more and more Treatment Courts and it's just continuing funding that has continued to increase. For example, I can say that in twenty-twenty-one, two similar municipalities, they both received five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. What I can't, what I could do in twenty-twenty-three would be apply and we could see what we received and then we see the numbers, but I can't, I cannot imagine or I cannot. I cannot uh, imagine or I cannot provide any guesswork as to what would be received.
Yeah, what, what I'm speaking to is I see, I see a lot. We get these grants for, for X number of dollars, and then suddenly they say it's over five years. So that dilutes it quite a bit for, for that year, but, but it makes us think we got a whole bunch of money when we really didn't. So it spreads out.
So, um, I've got a couple of questions here. And when when you think about the federal funding in the post-four-year window, right, i- is it fairly consistent that courts are getting getting the additional operating funds? Or do we see some courts close for lack of funding out after four years?
Mister Mayor, in my, in my research, I've only seen the number of treatment courts go up throughout the country. I have, I do not have any data whether or not courts are closing. I can tell affirmatively that the money for continuing treatment courts is higher than starting treatment courts because they want them to keep continuing.
So when we think about, um, when, when I see the added F T's on your slide, right? And then I think about like our match, our match would come in the, in, in the, in the additional sort of F T and staff time. Is that correct?
We believe that the match would come from my time. It would come from technological resources. And uh, I think that there's a bit of a difference as to how much that would cost as we have staff. And we have different positions, certainly a finance director and city manager question.
Um, I'm supportive of uh, continuing the conversation here, right? Like, and I think that's what we're, that, that we've come to, like, you know, I know that Council Pictionary went out and did a ton of additional research to support you guys through this. Um, and, but my, right now, Oregon's a wash in drugs, right? And like, is, is we, we look at property crime and, you know, sort of quality of life crimes. The, the drug problem in the state is just continues to perpetuate itself into other, other crimes. Measure one-ten's been a disaster. So I think the other question that I have is really related to not, it's trying to get a holistic picture. I know you guys are scheduled to come back again in a couple of weeks. Um, we have a lot of mental health work that is sort of on the docket, and I really want to understand, right, like flesh out how, how much time and energy and money that this is going to take to, to operate in a timeline. And then compare it with the bigger questions that we have, because when uh, with the extended contract in the um, for medical services in the jail, right? And, you know, and I know that there's another cahoot ask that is potentially out there, and I'd really love to get a picture about what the additional investment that we're asking, you know, that we're asking for, because it's not just two hundred thousand dollars, right? Like, it's these two or three other things. And then, you know, ideally, and more, this is more of a, a Nancy question than it is you, Judge. Is some, some options to potentially pay for it?
Want to tag on to that, that if we're, if we're going to talk about this, um, you know, and then I think, I think just because of my, like, I think of it in terms of like a projects. So if we're going to talk about this in terms of what is the overall um, expenditure, it'd be really helpful also to get, and it's not all on you. But it just, you know, when we're, we're talking about, um, whether it's a disaster or unintended consequences of measure one-ten, um, or just what the ecosystem looks like, what the picture is, what the need is in addition, because this lays out really well what the, what the need is around, um, these particular, this particular population and arrest. But if we're going to talk about that, I would want to have that in a, in a package with, here's the need, here's what the crime is actually looking like, here's what the, you know, mental health is looking like. And so all, all of it together, which is a lot.
Yeah, and thanks for uh, for continuing. Well, and I, I think it's more that understanding that the decision about a, a treatment court is gotta be made in context of a lot of other work, you know, that the city's doing right now. Joe.
Thank you. Uh, excuse me. Very good presentation. It really outlines the information I have on it. Um, I think that as far as whether or not Springfield can, Springfield citizens that would be applicable to this type of treatment. If there's enough of those folks around, I, I think that that's not an issue. I think there is plenty. Um, so that's the capacity issue. I mean, I should say that's a numbers issue. And I don't think we're going to have a shortage, so what we need to do is look at what's our capacity. What, you know, how many can we fill in this program? And that will help you now determine what our potential costs are. And then, um, look at where we're going to be, what, you know, what, and I think, was it, oh, it was, uh, my friend Damian, he, he brought that up in regards to, um, what are, what are our check-in points? What, you know, where is our road to success or, or when is the program going to be determined or if it could be determined if it's successful? And what are those, what's the criteria to determine its successfulness, if that's a word? So that's going to be, that, I think that's going to be key. And I know that with our survey not that long ago, the citizens of Springfield resoundingly said what is important to them is to address our mental health needs and drug addiction needs in our city. Uh, in fact, it stood out as the, I think it was the most important thing over support with the police, meaning they wanted to couple that with the police. And I think this potentially would have, um, you know, if we have the initial funding to get it off the ground, that by going to the citizens, you know, even though we can apply to, to DOJ or, you know, whatever the organizations are that would provide us funding, that we can look to the citizens in case we have to have some sort of stopgap and, and say, okay, we've got this. This is how many people we've tr- have been treated successfully. Our recidiv- recidivism for those folks have been reduced by this much. And uh, we want to continue this, citizens, and so are you willing to help continue fund of this through the city, you know, through their tax dollars? Um, I'm all about asking citizens as opposed to telling citizens. And um, I think that this is a, a great uh, tool for our citizens, for our general health of our community. So I support it, but I do think that the questions um, that were brought up need to be addressed. And so far, I'm behind it. I appreciate being able to uh, be involved in that. And um, yeah, great.
All right, Nancy.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, counselors. And thank you, Judge, for this informative presentation. Um, you know, it's interesting, um, I have over twenty years of experience in government, primarily in counties. And ordinarily, when you have, so I have had experience with treatment courts, um, mental health courts, drug courts, veterans courts, even uh, what they would call community court, which is a lower level, uh, more of a social issues type of court. Um, there are a lot of factors that go into this that we need to flesh out a little bit more fully. And um, I'm certainly uh, ready, eager and willing to, to um, work with the judge on that. And also I would want to, of course, uh, involve our uh, Police Chief, Chief Shear, because this will have implications on staffing. We know that um, although we have made some positive strides in recruitment as of late, we are still um, understaffed in our police department. Um, and so tonight, really, this was just to bring this for you as a policy concept. You know, before we engage in a lot of research and time with the judge, we know his time is very valuable. That takes away from the courtroom and some other um, investment in, in fleshing it out further. I wanted to kind of gauge your temperature on this. You know, what I, Council Pictionary, I, I like your idea of, you know, what does our community feel about that? I would certainly encourage people to contact the city if they have uh, suggestions or ideas about uh, a treatment court. I will say though, um, I would want to talk to my colleague, uh, Mr. Mokr Heisky in Lane County and talk about their uh, drug court utilization as a county. Um, it's just an interesting uh, dynamic that we have in our city. Ordinarily, some social services are usually, at least in Oregon, delivered by counties. They have the structure in place. They have the case managers. They typically might have some social workers depending on the county. Um, cities ordinarily haven't done that in the past. It doesn't mean that you can't. It just means that that hasn't been historically done. So I just want to make sure that, I want to look at that utilization. Um, it's something that I've worked on and I know a lot about. So, um, I would, I think we could take this uh, before you with a little bit more information about what, what a real, the true cost would be. My caveat and what I would like you to all remember is that, you know, one of my um, guiding principles when considering a new, a program, especially a new program, is the sustainability of the program. And I'm not discounting the importance of this program and the need for this program, so I want to be clear about that. But I also want to, to be able to be there for our community in the long term, helping, you know, uh, people. So I don't want to set something up that, that could potentially fail for uh, lack of funding.
All right. So the, the two things I'm hearing is, um, is one of them is like, this is just purely a temperature check to say, hey, you guys worked as far as you possibly could without talking to us a little bit and, you now we're going to get some more information and sort of some, some uh, more uh, yeah, so some, the harder questions are coming. And the other quiet, the other thing about timing, it beca- is becoming an issue. It's going to take a little bit of time. This isn't going to happen tomorrow.
That's correct. Thank you.
Okay. Well, is there any other direction that you guys need? Any other questions that anybody has? Joe.
So I was looking at the um, funding window, and that's typically in the spring. And so is, I mean, what kind of jumpstart or, you know, where, where are you setting in the blocks for this in regards to taking advantage of it? This, this coming spring, or at least to know, okay, we can move forward or is this talk for another year?
Counselor, the court has completed everything the court can complete. We have the application ready. We drafted a twenty-page paper. We drafted all of these supplemental additions to this. The only really question from the court's perspective is the budget and how that would play within the city. I was prepared or I am prepared to apply as soon as it's open. I have the document completed. Uh, at any next council meeting, I can pro- provide every document that would be provided to the Bureau of Justice.
Great. I kind of knew that. But um, so what I would like to see in order for me to um, what we get behind that would be to look at, and I know this is a justified concern for Nancy, is that the funding um, where could it, what, what is, you know, hypothetical sources that we could look at that, you know, a, a menu which the council can look at saying, okay, because we know, you know, when you rob Peter to pay for Paul, something's going to be dropping off potentially. But I think the council, and, and it sounds like the council is very much in favor of this, uh, you know, moving forward. But I think the council would really appreciate a, a menu, so to speak, of filling in the blanks financially as opposed to just, okay, we're all going to put all of our eggs in one basket. We're going to go for that. You know, grant after this one, and that's what we're going to do. I'd like to be able to see a uh, plan A, B, and C.
So I can look for other grant sources and see what other committees.
Right, like at Lane County, you know, they've got the NAT, the Need Assessment Tool, the um, the RAT, which is a risk assessment tool. I don't know if they still use those two, two, but there's, you know, Lane County, there's courts out there that can, uh, that, you know, the public owns that material, and there's no reason why they can't help or step in and provide that material to save some of the uh, what we're looking at here and some of the costs and the time involved.
Okay, um, I think there's a lot, still a lot of questions. Um, I appreciate the fact you've gotten us, you know, this far, right? Which is just simply, you know, hey, here's a, here's a majority of the information. Here's what we learned. What do you think? Um, but I know we're a long way from, uh, a long way from the finish line. And I want to put one other plug in here that is like, we do li- kind of live in a, you know, um, in a system, right? So this is, what you brought us is the most standard form of the way to do this. I can tell you, I would be open to, as you do more research, you know, if, if you guys need to tweak it to make sure that it works and can happen in a, in a, you know, in particular for Springfield. Um, I'm open to that, right? We do not have to do the standard way of doing things. We can, we can tweak it. We can add, we can subtract. Um, I'm open to other options when we see this again.
Thank you, Mister Mayor.
All right. Always good to see you, Judge. Um, I know we don't get to see you enough. You know, but we'll, we'll, we'll find some time for you to come back and just talk about court operations with us.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Okay, that is our only item for uh, for the work session tonight. We will be on the same link for the regular session and we're going to look at the time, and we are going to be back in thirteen minutes. So I'm going to adjourn us. We are going to go on mute and then talk amongst yourselves, and we'll be back in thirteen minutes. Thank you. I'd like to call the regular session of the Springfield City Council to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Counselor Pitts.
Here.
Counselor Moon.
Here.
Counselor Rodley.
Here.
Counselor Stare.
Here.
Counselor Woodrow and Counselor Pictionary.
Here, thank you.
Counselor Woodrow is excused for the evening. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we begin our meeting tonight, I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online to please keep yourselves on mute until you are called to provide public testimony. There are two times designated for public testimony this evening under public hearings and business from the audience. If you are attending in person, please complete the request to speak card located at the entrance of the council chambers and give them to the city recorder. If you are joining us with tablet, smartphone, or computer, and you wish to speak at either of those times, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. The order of the public testimony is as follows. Anyone in person in the council chambers, and then anyone who has raised their hand. You know, could you let us know how many people are joining us this evening?
Yes, Mayor, we have approximately nineteen folks in person and fifteen attendees online.
Thank you. First item, please.
First item is Springfield upbeat. You have two items under Springfield upbeat. Item number one is mayor's recognition. Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation, and Mayor, this is your item.
I've got to get organized here, so. Whereas homes should be a safe and trustworthy place, but for too many Oregonians, it is fraught with terror due to domestic violence. Whereas domestic violence affects not only the person that's being abused, but also children, neighbors, friends, families, coworkers, faith communities, and others. Seeing or hearing abuse can be particularly terrifying for children and people with trauma histories. And children witnessing violence is recognized as a form of abuse itself. And whereas the Hope and Safety Alliance continues to provide safety, hope, and healing to domestic violence survivors of all genders through advocacy and support, uh, support and focus on education, prevention, and has served thousands of people in Lane County for more than forty-five years. And whereas the impact and cost of domestic violence is wide-ranging and devastating, directly affecting individuals, children and society in this community and throughout the United States. I, Sean Van Gordon, the mayor of Springfield, uh, proclaim that October twenty-two, twenty-two is the Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Springfield and urge all people to actively participate in the scheduled activities and programs and work towards eradicating domestic violence, improving victim safety and holding perpetrator, uh, perpetrators of domestic abuse accountable for their actions and against individuals, individual victims in our society. I believe we have Kim Lacks here to accept the proclamation. All right, and I believe the next one is me too.
Yes, the next item is Manufacturing Month proclamation.
Whereas manufacturing fuels Oregon's economic growth and creates jobs. And whereas manufacturing helps, helped the nation overcome COVID-nineteen and created products we use every day. And whereas emerging technologies such as three-D printing, unmanned aerial vehicles, solar cells, robotics, wave buoys, and wind turbine components provide high-paying jobs for Oregonians. And whereas they're not only vital to our economy, but essential for our local communities. And whereas in-demand college degrees in manufacturing, the manufacturing sector, including engineering, computer science, business economics, math, and welding, whereas the city of Springfield and many other organizations are committed to developing a high-quality manufacturing and welding. Whereas the city of Springfield and many other organizations are committed to developing a high-quality manufacturing workforce ready for rewarding careers and making Oregon products. I Sean Van Gordon, Mayor of Springfield, proclaim October seventh, twenty-twenty-two in Springfield Manufacturing Month and urge all residents to participate in the observance and what makes this industry so innovative. And we have Bonnie and Avril here, two of our fa- you know, favorite people. Uh, well, while they're exiting, I'm just going to make a plug about, you know, manufacturing and its importance in Springfield. We're still a community that makes things and, you know, we work really, really hard and, you know, in any time we can talk about the importance of manufacturing and making goods in our city, it's a good thing. Uh, next item, please.
Mayor, the next item is the consent calendar.
I would like to make a motion that we prove the consent count. Second.
Neil, could he call the roll, please?
Yes, Counselor Pitts.
All right.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare.
Hi.
Counselor Woodrow. And Counselor Pictionary.
Hi.
The motion passes five yeses, zero nos, and one abstention uh, absence. Next item, please.
Next item is public hearings. You have two public hearings tonight. Public hearing number one is annexation of territory to the city of Springfield. Annex point two-six acres of residential property located at twelve seventy-nine Janus Street. That's map seventeen zero-three-three-four-two-two. Tax slot two-one-one and concurrently annex the intersection of Aspen Street and Janus Street, a segment of Janus Street and Janus Court. Again, this is ordinance number three, an ordinance annexing certain territory. That's twelve seventy-nine Janus Street and public rights away for the intersection of Aspen Street and Janus Street and approximately three hundred thirty-nine foot long segment of Janus Street and Janus Court to the city of Springfield and Willamette Park and Recreation District withdrawing the same territory from the Rainbow Water District adopting a severability clause. This is a first reading and Andy Limbert is here for the staff report.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and counselors. Happy to be here in person. I just wanted to bring up a couple of maps. This is a property that's in far west Springfield. Um, at Janus Street, just uh, east of the intersection with Aspen Street. This is one of three projects, um, areas that the city has identified for extension of public sewer. And the purpose of this annexation is to facilitate connection of a house located at twelve seventy-nine Janus Street to city sewer due to a failed septic system on the property. Uh, the property does not currently abut the city limits. And so the annexation of the right-of-way for Janus Street as well as Janus Court uh, will bring the city limits to uh, abut this property. Um, the extension of the city sewer is anticipated for later this year. And the property owner has already paid the uh, necessary fees for connection to the sewer. It's just a matter of having that physically installed and tested. And then they can make connection uh, to maintain habitability of the house. Uh, there was a couple of phone calls that staff received, people inquiring about the nature of the annexation. If adjacent properties would automatically be annexed with the rights of way and that is not correct. The only property that's being annexed, private property, is twelve seventy-nine Janus Street. However, it does facilitate annexation of other properties should they choose to or need to in the future uh, in order to connect to city services. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Counselor Pictionary.
So looking at this, and I understand as far as um, the part about contiguous property in the city. So was there any, it appears as though there may be some financial advantage for those property owners, for example, inside Janus Court in regards to doing this now as opposed to property owners attempting to do it later at a cost.
I would say absolutely, um, because the city is pre-installing the sewer lines, uh, both east-west along Janus Street and then a north connection into Janus Court. Also sewer laterals will be provided for those properties um, at no cost to the property owners this time. Um, should they wish to connect, they still would need to annex and pay the necessary fees. But installation of the public line would not be the responsibility of um, one or more of the residents there, which is a a significant cost to bear.
So, I guess, excuse me, historically, we've charged for that, right?
Under state law, um, if the city were not to sponsor this extension, the property owner would be responsible for at least extending from the intersection of Aspen and Janus. That's the nearest connection point across their property frontage. Um, so about a hundred and fifty feet of line, um, that's a a significant cost uh, to repair the street and install public sewer line. Um, it may be more than the property owner could really financially bear. Um, um, it's a um, adult home. Uh, so it's, it, you know, it's, it's uh, an adult.
Oh, I get it.
Their home. So it's um, the city has used this, and I think maybe Jeff can explain, used um, sewer uh, assessment fees in order to identify areas where strategically um, extending the sewer would benefit at least one property owner immediately and potentially others down the line. Um, because we're seeing an increasing number of requests for annexation due to failed septics in these neighborhoods.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, we allowed a, I don't want to, I'm using the wrong term, but I'm thinking tax district, but it was called a um, what?
I can, I can.
I just, what was the name of it again? Oakland improvement district. So it's that LID. And with the LID, we had a neighborhood that was north of Jasper Road by the school, Cherokee, like Cherokee area that those folks had to become members of that local improvement district and it, and it cost them.
Uh, so, um, what we're doing, so the council's approved through the CIP uh, program for local sewer extensions. So these property owners are still paying their portion of the project when they connect. So those are the fees that Andy's um, talking about. So they still are paying their in lieu of assessment. So the local improvement district, they would have paid an assessment. These folks, when they connect, will have to pay an in lieu of assessment, which means they'll pay in essence their portion, which is very equivalent to a local improvement district. The difference is this individual property owner would have had to pay if they couldn't get participation from their neighbors, would have had to fund a whole public improvement project, which is a hundred and fifty feet of public line with no reimbursement.
No, and I get that. I guess the only point I'm making is that I wanted to make sure that we are consistent and not kind of hammering one neighborhood saying, okay, if you want to do this, it's going to cost you. And then us coming over to this neighborhood in Janus saying, hey, things are different now and and we've got you covered, which to me would not be fair to the people that have paid through an LIDs. Although I, I mean, I, I don't, I'm not trying to be a proponent of hammering every property owner that wants to join into our system or in the city, but it, but it, I, I'd like to keep think, or like to be able to make sure that we're being equitable.
Correct. No, I, I would view these as very similar situations. The difference is instead of all of the homeowners paying their assessment this time, they'll pay when they have to connect when their septic fails.
Thank you very much.
Are there another, any other questions?
Thanks, Joe.
Okay, I think we're ready to open the public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. Uh, I have no cards for this item. Neil, do we have any hands?
Mayor, it appears we have no hands for this item.
And I closed the public hearing, uh, and this is no action required. It's first reading only. Next item, please.
The next item is your second public hearing, uh, public hearing number two, annexation of territory to the city of Springfield. Annexing point two-zero acres of residential property located at nine-three-two South Fortieth Place, map eighteen dash zero-two dash zero-six dash fourteen tax slot eighty-four hundred and concurrently annex a segment of Osage Street, the intersection of Osage Street and South Fortieth Place and a segment of South Fortieth Place. Again, this is ordinance number four, an ordinance annexing certain territory, nine-thirty-two South Fortieth Place and public rights away for approximately three hundred fourteen foot line, foot-long segment of Osage Street, the intersection of Osage Street and South Fortieth Place, and an approximately four hundred twenty-four foot long segment of South Fortieth Place to the city of Springfield and Willamette Park and Recreation District, withdraw, withdrawing the same territory from the Willikenzie Rural Fire Protection District, adopting a severability clause and providing an effective date. This is a first reading and Andy Limbert is here for the staff report.
Thank you. Similar to the previous annexation, this site is in South Springfield. Uh, we actually had a recent annexation for a failed septic just to the east, um, about a block. Um, so counselors may recall that um, recent annexation request. In this case, um, it's kind of an inverted L. Um, the property is at the corner, the intersection of Osage Street and South Fortieth Place. Um, it is requesting annexation due to failed septic system. Um, the extension of the public sewer will be from the city limits line uh, to the east, um, which is kind of at the, the end of the L portion. Uh, that's where the city um, sewer system currently terminates. It also was extended um, due to uh, in, in order to facilitate construction on those two properties, which are on the north side of the street where the city limits line kind of jogs around them. Um, so this annexation will allow for extension of the public sewer line eastward and then southward. It's to serve the property right at the corner at nine-thirty-two South Fortieth Place. It also will facilitate connection to some vacant properties on the north side of the street and other properties in the vicinity that are not currently annexed that may request annexation in the future due to failed septic. And again, this is a second uh, within a block and a half distance approximately, um, that has requested annexation in the last year or so. Staff did um, talk to actually a number of people that were out um, in the neighborhood when we posted the site with um, public hearing signs. So did speak to some of the folks in the neighborhood to just, and was able to relate to them, the purpose of the annexation. Um, and the fact that annexation of the street rights away did not constitute annexation of their property. Uh, so by that, uh, there wasn't any written comments. We did have a couple of phone calls as well, uh, just inquiring about the nature of the annexation and again, whether it constituted annexation of the adjacent properties, which it does not. And so staff reminded um, the people that are making inquiries that it is upon request. Um, and that's been council's practice for, for decades. The purpose of this annexation, again, to, to connect to uh, city services and I'd be happy to answer any questions. And again, the same um, circumstances apply. In this case, it would have been almost three hundred feet of sewer that the property owner would have had to extend. Uh, it just barely uh, was under the threshold of state law requiring annexation. Uh, so this would um, allow for them, they have paid the, their proportionate share of the fees, but they don't have to front-end the cost of a significant project in this case.
Joe.
So just to help me with this map, with the map on uh, page two of two. So, I'm trying to understand where it's the city limits line that are north, south, and then from uh, uh, Osage Street north and then along Osage Street and then heading south towards Jasper and then east along Jasper. And it looks like the properties on the east side of South Fortieth are in the city? Or is, I mean, I'm trying to, because yellow, yellow takes out the lines.
Yeah, it's a little, it's a little hard. So in this case, Jasper Road is inside the city limits. The property at the corner of the, sort of the northwest corner of um, Filbert Lane and is it Filbert, yeah, Filbert Lane and Jasper Road, that was recently annexed. So the city limits line runs around the edge of their property. And so Mount Vernon Elementary School is inside the property, inside the city limits. Um, there's properties on um, Horace Street that are inside property across the street from nine-thirty-two South Fortieth Place to the north and just slightly diagonally, kind of we call it kitty corner, I guess you'd say.
Right.
That is inside the city limits. And so it would be technically contiguous to the city limits because of just an intervening right-of-way does allow for continuity. So it does not need to have the right-of-way annexed in order to be can technically contiguous. But in order for the city to install um, sewer lines, um, it without having to do an extra territorial extension or something, annexation of the rights of way was deemed to be um, expedient in this case and to.
So the ones on, the ones north, south on South Fortieth Place, the homes that are lots that are running north, south along that street.
On both sides of the street are outside the city limits.
Okay.
Yeah, and including the property requesting annexation, um, the city limits line then runs north. Um, about what, five or six properties to the west. So there's properties on kind of the western portion of Pinion Street and El Osage Street. Those are inside the city limits. But this is a fairly large contiguous area that's unincorporated right now.
Very much. Appreciate it.
Leonard.
Thank you. Uh, then thanks for this presentation, Andy. Uh, i- if I'm reading it correctly, um, Filbert Lane is also outside of the city limits. Is, is that correct? Or is it inside?
Uh, it's actually the Filbert Lane right-of-way is actually inside city limits.
Inside city limits.
Yeah, save the one property at the corner with Jasper Road. Um, the properties then running north along the west side of the street are outside as well as properties. Uh, there's three, I believe, on the east side. Those are also outside city limits.
Okay, it is the, is the, is the basic thrust of having the streets inside the city limits and the tax lots outside of the city limits? Does it um, tend to minimize our tax revenue on those lots?
I was, yes, if this, if the properties have not yet annexed to the city limits, they would not be part of the city's tax base. That's.
Okay, but the sewage lines, the water lines, those are probably at least partly under the street, right?
Yeah, they'll be entirely under the street uh, for the public-owned portion. The laterals may extend into or close to the private property line um, at each street frontage. Yeah, so be installed uh, with the project. But annexation of the city would be required for uh, properties to actually connect.
Okay, but, but they would be able to access any pipes or any kind of water or utilities that was um, above the street, right?
That's correct.
Okay, that sounds, yeah, okay, that, that's all I got.
Are there any other questions? All right, I think we're ready to open the public hearing. Um, I do not have any cards for this item. Uh, Neil, are there any hands raised?
Uh, Mayor, no hands for this item.
I, I'm going to close the public hearing. Um, this is no action required. First reading only. Next item, please.
Next item is business from the audience.
I do not have any cards for business from the audience. Neil, do we have anybody raising their hand?
Just give folks another moment. Not seeing any hands for uh, business from the audience.
Next item, please.
Uh, next item is business from the city council. Item number one, committee appointments, uh, planning commission appointments. And this is Sandy Belson with the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. When, when you get pulled up from that panelist or to be a panelist, there, you're like blanked out for a minute or it seems like a minute, so. Um, I assume I'm up now.
We, we are ready for you now and you are in the right city council meeting with the right counsel.
Thank you. My name is Sandy Belson. I'm the comprehensive planning manager here tonight to request your action on appointing two planning commissioners to fill vacancies. Um, you had interviewed uh, last week and your discussion indicated an interest in appointing Stephen Schmunk and Seth Thomas to fill those terms um, immediately with an expiration of December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six.
All right. Um, Mary Bridget, I know that there was some additional information. When we were at, you know, council last week, um, we, we discussed Seth's appointment for uh, in relation to CDAC, right? And it sounds like there was more information about what Steve's uh, Steve's status is with the budget committee. Could you fill us in so that everybody has it?
Well, um, Stephen Schmunk, who applied to be on the planning commission, is actually also on the budget committee. He has, um, his term is almost over. He has one more year on his term. But um, it's a three-year commitment and I thought his term was done, so I didn't mention it last week, but he does have one more. But um it's a three year commitment and I thought his term was done, so I didn't mention it last week, but he does have one more. Year left on his term, and I know that was a subject of discussion for um uh the other candidate, Mr. Seth Miller, I think it is. So just wanted to make sure you were clear on that, your operating policies say when possible, people won't serve on more than one committee. Um but only one year left.
You okay over there? Or sorry, Mary Bridget, we're losing.
That we need to be fair.
We, we're losing control over here. Um, all right, Leonard.
I um I agree with Counselor Rodley, I think we need to hold everybody the same standard. And I mean, if i- if 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 Mr. Schmunk wants to serve on the planning commission, he should resign from the budget committee.
And I don't. Joe.
I had a conversation with him, he's he's totally fine with stepping down from that, but he'll officially let us know and whenever we need it, so it's it's moot.
Yeah, okay. There, we have all the information and we got it settled.
Do you realize how hard it is to get people on somebody's committees? You're taking him off, anyway, I guess you're ready for me?
Well, well, hang on one second, Damian.
Hello, so was another person on C D A C?
Correct, and I and I think they've agreed to step down if they go to planning commission.
Do we think or do we know, I mean, I I I think.
We know.
Cause I I need.
We know. We know, they're they're stepping down, they they already know it.
So so that means that we have to find somebody else for C D A C sooner or later, which means another seat's opening up.
Correct. Correct. And I think the other relevant piece of information is. My count when I saw that email was there were four budget committee, we were gonna be uh looking to fill four budget committee.
Recruiting for budget committee anyway.
Yep, okay, good. Damian, are you good or you have anything else?
Yeah, so just making sure, so are are we saying that because one person is not planning on uh. Stepping down that we won't be appointing them and then the other person we have. Whether is it in writing, is it a conversation, I mean, what uh do we have proof that that person is planning on stepping down?
So I'm gonna go through this and then have the staff keep me honest if uh if that, if uh you know, I don't have all the information. I think after the meeting last week, we had a conversation with Seth and Seth told us that he, you know. Essentially that if he was appointed, he would agree to resign from the first committee. Based on our operating procedures, since then, everybody remembered that Steve had an additional year. And a conversation's been have with the with Steve, it's been the same, been along those same lines, which is, hey, once we appoint you. The expectation would be for you to step down. Um and that's kind of how we got to this point today, because there were some questions about whether or not we were treating everybody sort of the same way. Um but the plan right now would be if we appoint, if we approve the motion, um then both folks are gonna step down from their current assignments.
And okay, Damon?
Not really, but I mean, whatever, I I just, I don't know, like, I I just, I see this being a bigger issue, and yes, I do agree that. It is hard for us to appoint people, but I mean, to to find people to do this, but I just, I. You know, I I don't like people using different boards to. S- step up, uh I mean, and it it, I don't know, I mean, I, there are a lot of deeper issues that I think we need to be prepared to discuss. But yeah, I just, I just don't have a good feeling about any of this, to be honest.
Steve.
Okay, then I would like to make a motion that we appoint Stephen Schmunk and Seth Thompson. To the planning commission with terms that begin immediately expired December thirty first, twenty twenty six.
Neil, could you call the roll, please?
Yes, Counselor Pitts.
No.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare. Counselor Woodrow. And Counselor Pictionary.
Yay.
Uh, motion passes, four yeses, one no, and one absent, next item, please.
Any other business from the city council?
Is there any other business, Cory?
I have something, um thank you. I just wanted to, uh I have some appreciation for Lieutenant George Crowley and um Serge. I think he's Sergeant Officer Cody Lane, um who are two of our S P D officers who took time last week to sit down with me. Um because I wanted to have a better understanding of what some of the challenges are um that are happening. For constituents and folks who live in Ward Three and beyond Springfield, and so it was very helpful that they took that time and we sat and chatted and. I shared what I was hearing from neighbors and they shared um some of the unintended consequences of measure one ten. And just sort of the overall ecosystem, um because we've heard from constituents who had concerns about. What is happening, because people are seeing there's there's a difference, and so. I just wanted to express my appreciation for that and to encourage folks who are watching, if you also have questions, you're concerned, you're like, what? How does this impact me in my neighborhood, what does it mean if I have complaints? Please reach out to them, we need people to call and share what's going on in their neighborhood, we need people to share, call and. Ask questions and and get involved, because that makes it really challenging for us to make these changes that we all talk about that we want. If we don't really have these conversations with each other and really know what's going on, so. I just want to take a little time to appreciate that and to encourage people to reach out to S P D if you have questions. Reach out to the non emergency line, if you are concerned about things that are happening in your neighborhood, please call. Let them know, because we we can't do anything if we don't know. Thank you.
All right, thank you, anybody else? I have two quick updates, um please may take the time to read your email, because um our human resources uh director and extraordinary. Is sending out information about um about evaluations for our employees, so that's, those dates are coming up. You can tell how close I read it, because in a in a in a pinch, you know, I couldn't recall the date, but. Um it it's always helpful to the to the staff that we get that stuff done before they have to, you know, chase us down and make sure it's turned out, turned in on time. Yes, and that is why I'm looking at you, Counselor Pictionary. Second thing would be October twenty first, the mayor's review, um there's an opportunity, you know, it is a combination between Springfield Rotary. And the Emerald Arts Center, so once you, there the tickets are seventy five dollars apiece, you have a reception. In the Emerald Arts Center, and then you move down to the um, you move down to the Wildish Theater for a night of uh entertainment. There's four acts, just to be clear, I know Cory's gonna ask me, I am not seen in the mayor's review, I'm not performing anything, I. I I am a bystander.
And the money goes to the the art center, not you.
Correct, correct, it is going to be split between the charitable arm for Springfield Rotary. And the um and the Emerald Arts Center. Next item, please.
Uh next item is business from the city manager, item number one is acceptance of project P two one one five seven. Which is the Mohawk and Olympic Street overlay, this would be resolution number one, a resolution to accept city project P two one one five seven. Mohawk and Olympic Street overlay, and Jeff Pascal's here for the staff report.
Thank you, good evening, uh Mayor and counselors, Jeff Pascal, Community Development Director. Um before you tonight is a resolution to accept the capital's, street capital preservation project for Mohawk Boulevard and Olympic. Um they are the fourth and fifth segments of nine that were funded through the voter approved two thousand eighteen street bond. Um the project was managed by Christie Kruger, she couldn't be here tonight, unfortunately. Um it was in designed and inspected by Dow, a local um consultant engineering firm and constructed by Wildish. And I can answer any questions if you like.
Are there any questions? All right, every time we talk about the street bond, um it's exciting, right? This is one of, this is a great news story for Public Works and the um the investments that we're making in our streets and every place. Every time I talk to somebody out in in Mohawk and Olympic, they compliment how smooth and, you know, nice the uh finished street is, so. Great job, Cory.
Um I also, I just want to add, because I don't have a question, but this is, this is my neighborhood, and I drive Mohawk and I drive Olympic. And I drive Centennial almost every day, um and I believe I might have told the mayor this, that. I think we're also seeing some some renovated businesses and we've had some, you know, we've had a new dental office that's moved in near the hospital. And we're seeing some new restaurants move in there, and I like to believe that it's because of this investment and want to thank the voters of Springfield. Um and if you get a chance to drive there or go to the Willamette Swim Center, which I also try to do four times a week, just so y'all know. Um uh it it's it's wonderful and it's it's newly painted and it's there's, there's sort of protections to keep folks from. Running out of the middle of the street and to sort of slow the traffic down, so it just looks great, and I think it's a great investment in that neighborhood. And we're starting to see growth in that neighborhood as well, so thank you voters and thank you team that managed it.
All right, Steve.
Cory just said, what I'm thinking or want to say is, that improvement to Mohawk enhances the whole neighborhood. You drive through there and it's just a beautiful part of the city now, it always was, but it's much more now.
All right.
Hey, ready now?
I'm ready now.
Okay, so. Uh resolution, uh a res- resolution to accept city project P two one one five seven. Mohawk and Olympic Street Overlay.
Neil, could you call the vote, please?
Yes, Counselor Pitts.
Aye.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare.
Aye.
Counselor Woodrow and Counselor Pictionary.
Aye. Motion passes, five yeses, zero nos and one absent, next item, please.
Any other business from the city manager?
Yes, uh thank you, uh just a couple of quick items, one, I just wanted to correct for the record. Um that Cody Lane is actually a sergeant in. Department, uh however, Counselor Rodley, it's okay, this is a fairly recent development, but I. I happen to know Sergeant Lane and I think he's doing a great job, and of course Lieutenant Crowley has been with our department a long time and they're both excellent represent. Representatives for the department, so um my thanks to them for uh going out and and talking about these issues in in your uh district. Also, you can also tell that we're all a bunch of government nerds, because we're so excited about a street project. Um but I'm excited about it, because I love it when we can keep our promises to our voters. And I want to thank the voters for believing in your city and that we can get it done for you, and I also want to thank. Wildish Construction for just the excellent, excellent work they did on that project, it looks fabulous. So if you're wondering while we're all geeking out about this, go to our uh website, look at the materials, you have to scroll all the way to the bottom. But we do have some before and after photos that look really great, that's all I have.
Joe. Can't pass it up now, sorry. They did a great job, I. One and one part of that in particular where they increased the queue, the traffic queue, turn lane, southbound. For on Mo- on Mohawk, as you approach Olympic, it allows for a lot more vehicles to be queued up without blocking. Mohawk, even though that's so busy, it's still blocking the hawk, but I really appreciate the responsiveness. I was jumping up and down about it for quite a while, and to see that in place, it's really helped moving that traffic through that area, so. We have a really good job.
Steve.
Something different than this. Probably, I should have said it earlier, but I got an email today, something about economic development director in the works.
I can, I can comment on that, um.
We're making all sorts of breaking.
Well, I I don't, I'm not quite ready with breaking news yet, we have, we have made a an offer to a candidate, we had a great pool of applicants. Um and that the person has accepted our offer, we're we're putting together um. A nice kind of release that we're going to put out to the community, and of course you to the council first, but we need to get that kind of approved by the candidate before we. Uh launch it, um. Because news travels fast in this town, I've learned, um the other thing is, I also want to congratulate uh Jeff Pascal for his appointment to Community Development Director.
All right. Well, congratulations, Jeff, we are pretty excited, it feel, things are moving so fast around here, it feels like old news at this point. Um any other questions before, all right, next item, please.
Any business from the city attorney?
No, no business, thank you.
All right, that was a, that was it for the evening, um thank you so much, everybody, have a great night, I'm going to adjourn us, we're adjourned.